We thank for how you've been so wonderful, so kind and so merciful. Now Father, we ask you for your presence into this space, into this room. Father, we ask you for unity. Father God, we ask you for clarity, wisdom, and understanding. And God, when we leave this place, God, let us all be all one accorded. And God, we thank you for our great city, the city of Washington. God, we pray that you touch every resident, and we thank you for each employer. In Jesus' name we pray, pray. Amen.
Amen. We would now call the meeting to order, and I'd like to welcome everyone to the Washington City Council Meeting of August the 4th. And thank you everyone for joining us. And at this time, we have roll call, Madam Clerk.
Mayor Sadler.
Here.
Mayor Protem Tyree.
Present.
Councilmember Pitt is absent. Got Tom. Councilmember Horton.
Here.
Councilmember Brooks.
Here.
Councilmember Hodges.
Here, okay. And we will now have a pledge of allegiance led by Councilwoman Hodges.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
Thank you. Need a motion to approve the minutes of July 14, 2025?
So move second.
Okay. Have a motion and a second. All in favor, raise your right hand, please. Okay, all in favor. I will remind everyone tonight if they were speaking that into the mic when they speak tonight. Also need to approve the agenda with any necessary amendments at this time?
So move second.
All right, have a motion and a second. All in favor, raise your right hand, please. All in favor? We have one consent agenda item. No, excuse me, we don't have any consent agenda items at this time. Comments from the public, do we have anyone to sign up?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, we have one, Keenan Feldhausen.
Okay, you can come up and...
He's here to discuss the Eagle Scout project.
Oh, okay, great. You come up and speak into the mic, and if you state your name and your address, just speak clearly into the mic. Thank you. All right, we are.
Hello, my name is Keenan Feldhausen. I am currently the Senior Patrol Leader of Troop 99 here in Washington, North Carolina. First of all, I would like to give a big thank you to the council for allowing me to present today.
Thank you for coming.
Of course. Per my Eagle project, which I must display that I have an... that I can just display leadership, cooperation, and a willingness to get my project done.
Okay.
So for my project, I would like to build two benches and two planters down by the Underground Revue Museum in downtown Washington. The individual cost to the city council will be none. I will take care of all finances myself per fundraiser. My specific request today was to inquire about a permit if any was needed, as I am building on public property, on city property, and I will now open for any questions that you might have.
All right. Tell you what, that sounds like a great project, and I'm sure you have full support of the council and staff, and if you would talk with Ms. Hope Wooler, she will make sure you have everything that you need. And thank you.
All right. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. Great. So make sure you all have a conversation, okay? You're Ms. Hope Wooler. Wonderful, thank you. Do you want to have any scheduled public appearance this evening? Mr. Russell, Correspondence Special Report?
Yes, Correspondents and Special Reports, Item A, POs in excess of 50,000. As we work through the first month of the fiscal year, I see a tremendous amount of POs issued. All of these are budgeted items that are listed within the packet. Just a couple of notable items. Talbert and Bright being 299,000 covers some of the improvements at the airport. That is funded through the legislative appropriation. There are a couple of other airport items listed in there, but again, these are all budgeted and currently funded through the existing budget. Item B, budget transfers, we just have a couple of those for the first month of the new fiscal year. Again, just kind of reallocating some money through a couple of different departments. But the most notable item in this section is Item C, bad debt write-off. On page 28, if you notice, our write-offs for the year total 349,728 dollars. The largest of those being EMS charges. Historically, EMS charges are the largest portion that we write off. Each year, on our state audit, the acceptable loss rate's roughly 5% for utilities. Again, we are somewhere in the 1.5%, 2% range, and we have done that historically. I think we commend our finance staff as well as our customer service staff downstairs in collecting all of that as well as we can. And the EMS charges, the $230,000 write-off that you see, is just a small portion of what we do bill annually, so the majority of those are paid. And one other point worth noting, we participate in North Carolina Debt Setoff, which is a state-funded program that helps with collecting debt. And each year, we send any outstanding debt to them, and that stays on file through NC Debt Setoff for a five-year period. And if any of these individuals were to receive some inheritance, win the lottery, come into some type of funding, or have a tax return where they would get a state tax return, those are... the funds are garnished to pay the outstanding debt. So the number you're seeing here, the 349,000 for write-off, is a debt from five years ago. This has, we have tried five years to collect on this, so this number's probably gone down some. And again, after the five years expires, that's when we bring it to council to write off, and as part of our policy, we bring this to council and make you aware. But again, with a $140 million budget, 349,000 is a very small number, so commend staff on their collection efforts.
Okay. I thought I heard you say that the state auditor... I think we were like 1%, somewhere about there in the state auditor. What is state auditor?
The state average or what they find as an acceptable loss rate is 5%.
Okay.
So we are well below that.
Well below 5%.
Well below that.
Around about 1%?
Yes, sir. We're around 1.5, 1.5 on our loss rate annually. So it's very, very low.
All right. And this is a five-year debt set off?
Yes, we continue to make efforts to collect outstanding debt for five years through state assistance and then before writing it off. So it's not just a one year and then we write off. We do make a good faith effort to collect, and usually our collection efforts are fruitful. They're worthwhile to participate in.
Okay, all right. Thanks. Any comments from council, questions? Mr. Russell? If not, Section 7, sir?
Section 7, reports from boards, commissions, and committees. One to note for Washington Airport Authority, we have three large projects that are underway at the airport right now. We are finishing up a large drainage project. S.T. Wooton is the contractor on that. Again, a lot of this, all of this was funded through legislative appropriation, but that will improve some of the draining at the airport. The Interbank STEM Facility, they've started breaking ground on that. I don't know if you've noticed at the corner of Market and Airport Road, they've started kind of doing some site work there. And a third phase of improvements at the airport include taxiway extension and two new hangars being constructed north of the existing terminal to focus on, to provide smaller aircraft hangar facilities as well as a drone hangar. We're working and moving that forward. It's kind of the bigger picture with some of the efforts we focused on to recruit that type of industry here in Beaufort County.
Okay.
Human Relations Council, I don't know if there's anything to present on that?
We have nothing to report at this meeting, Mr. Mayor, but we will be present at the next meeting with a report.
Okay, thank you.
And Electric Advisory Board, again, the previous debt that we had through Nikipah and Electric Cities has fallen off in July, so that will result in a monthly savings for our power purchase agreement through Duke. So it'll help us just operate more efficiently and effectively move forward.
What's that amount?
It equates to roughly 1.8 million a month in reduced cost for our power purchase.
Okay, that'd be substantial savings, yes. Great. Any other board, commission, committees? Any comments? Yes, sir?
Mr. Mayor, Washington Tourism Development Authority, we do have training planned. Jonathan, do you have any word on?
There were some scheduling conflicts in August. We are hopeful to have it, I believe, August 20th will be, no, September 20th will be the next scheduled meeting, and we're hopeful to do the training. They want an abbreviated training a week before the scheduled meeting and then have a more lengthy year training on the scheduled day. So those two weeks, we're anticipating having that training take place in September.
And that training will be from?
The North Carolina School of Government, they're providing a facilitator to help kind of walk the new board members through the purpose of Tourism Development Authorities, where their funding comes from, and just kind of some general understanding of how the boards interact within the organization.
Thank you. And that training will be open to council as well, just in case someone on council wants more understanding of what WTDA can and cannot do. And again, that's going to be sponsored through the North Carolina School of Government, and it'll be a one-day training, we hope, but it may extend to two days, but we're hoping for one day if possible.
We've identified the facilitator, and she has mentioned that it may be best to do kind of a small condensed version, one day, and then with a second. But again, we can look at that as well for availability.
Okay, so Madam Clerk, if you... what's the date it said? Make sure myself and all council members is aware of the date, so we can attend if we like. Thank you. Don't have any appointments tonight? Section 9, old business?
All right. Both of the old business items and both of the new business items are more just administrative efforts to keep things moving forward. From the accounting standpoint, Item A is a purchase order carry-forward budget ordinance amendment. This just allows any outstanding POs that were not executed prior to June 30th, the end of the previous fiscal year, to carry forward. And that happens for a variety of reasons, availability of product, vendors unable to deliver, things just not getting delivered in time. But again, that just carries that forward. It's more of an administrative action that it reflects for our budget to move that forward. If there are any specific... there's a lot in there, we have a lot moving forward. Sometimes this business doesn't fit in a nice neat box inside of the fiscal year, and that's just where this carries over, moves from June 30th to July 1st. But again, if there are any questions on any of the purchase order carry-forward, please let me know. But again, they were all pretty straightforward. I didn't see any really outliers that raised any red flags.
Okay. What's council pleasure on adopting this item?
I move that the city council adopt a budget ordinance amendment to appropriate funding for opening purchase orders as of June 30 of 2025.
Have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? If not, all in favor of this item, raise your right hand, please. All in favor? Next item, sir?
Item B is a project carry-forward budget ordinance amendment, and it works in a similar fashion. Most of this is for capital projects that typically take longer than 12 months to complete. What we're recommending to move forward is 8.1 million, and they cover a variety of different projects. But again, a lot of things we do on a larger scale with the medical district drainage project being a prime example. We've been working on this for several years, and again, this is just moving forward to carry from June 30th to July 1st. So it's more of an accounting measure to make sure that we're aware of what we're spending in the new fiscal year.
Council pleasure on this item?
I move that the city council adopt a budget ordinance amendment to appropriate funding for prior year project carry-forward.
Second?
Okay. Motion and a second. Is there any discussion? If not, all in favor, raise your right hand. All in favor? New business, sir?
New business, Item A, is a job description for the office manager within the police department. This is just basically changing some of the specific job duties for this. It's not creating a new position, it's not increasing salaries in any way this time. But again, just providing a more clear job description on what the office manager does for the police department and public sector.
Okay. Yes, sir? Yes, sir?
I move, I request the city council approve the job description for office manager.
Second?
Have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? If not, all in favor, raise your right hand, please. All in favor? Thank you. Item B?
Item B is to update the personnel policy, Article 3, Pay Plan Section 12. Human Resources has been going through our personnel policy for the last several months. I think we've had some changes and tweaks the past three or four previous council meetings. But again, this just makes some adjustments in some of the language in the personnel policy to allow for people that are covering for different positions throughout different departments, for them to be compensated in a manner that personnel policy allows.
Council pleasure?
I request, Mr. Mayor, I request that the city council approve the updated Article 3, Pay Plan Section 12, Pay for Adding in Higher Level Classification. This request is to rename this section to Intern Pay to allow additional pay for employees taking on additional duties for either higher or lower level classifications.
Second?
Have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? If not, all in favor, raise your right hand. All right, all in favor? Mr. Russell, I know we're a little bit before six, so we can continue, and then we'll come back up to the other item, but any other items from?
A couple of things, just kind of announcements and informational items. Tomorrow is National Night Out, and right now, the weather looks like it's going to cooperate. I think we've got a variety of events planned for the community, so hopefully there'll be a good turnout for that and kind of lead into the kickoff of the new school year. Summer has rapidly gone by. I think we're about three weeks out from the first day of school for the fall. Starting back, I think a lot of city staff have put some, a lot of effort and time into making this event. It's grown a tremendous amount in the last seven or eight years, and we want to continue to see that move forward, so we're looking forward to that. I don't know if Chief Drake, or anyone, do you have any additional information on it? I think everything's in place, and the weather is the biggest thing that's always contingent upon. But right now, it looks like it's going to be a little cooler, and the rain's going to hold off.
Well, that's great. Again, like the state invited the public out to the National Night Event. I remember the first National Night Event, probably 13, 14 years ago, as they say, it rained cats and dogs that day, and it was a Sunday, I believe it was. That was 13, 14 years ago, so we've been having a great time every year. Myself and my friend Ed Booth have always cooked the hot dogs, and I think there's people out there in the community now that look forward to us cooking hot dogs. Some have contacted me this week and say, "I want my hot dog well done," and that sort of thing. So I said, "We will make sure that we are..." we're not Burger King, but we'll do our best to get it your way. But we're looking forward to seeing everyone out there.
And one other item worth noting is the Medical District Drainage Project, started this past week, a couple of weeks ago actually, and just with the... there's some disruption on Fifth Street. Again, this is something that we'll have to work through, and we try to communicate clearly to the community. Once this is completed, though, it'll help with stormwater drainage around the medical district, so during the event of a hurricane or any inclement weather, people will be able to access the hospital safely from an emergency management standpoint. But it'll also play into helping drain more of the residential area adjacent to the hospital. So I think we'll see storm drain improvement overall. We have several other items that we're still working towards with the 15th Street project coming up on the horizon. This will mesh well into that, and we'll see stormwater performance overall along that corridor should improve greatly.
Okay, all right.
I have a question.
Yes, sir?
For the stormwater, and just for clarity, if you will, once the pipes are changed and we're starting to drain water out, where are we draining it to?
We have, I believe, four separate basins in the city limits that have been identified through an engineering study that was performed roughly 15 years ago. The one that, for the medical district drains into the Jacks Creek Basin, that is a large tributary that runs basically through, right through the middle of town. That's one of the larger ones, but that will provide drainage into Jacks Creek, and it feeds a lot of area heading northwest through the city as Jacks Creek kind of meanders through that area. But the work that we're doing currently mainly focuses on that, but with the engineering, the stormwater engineering that was done 15 years ago or so, they provided a priority list on all basins, and we try to sprinkle around improvement projects on all of those. Some of those have more open-cut ditches where they just need to be cleaned out. Some have pipes that are undersized that we're improving and enlarging to allow for more flow. There's a variety of different treatments on where the water runs to, but again, it's something we try to focus on, the whole community. And too, with doing in certain areas, we have to kind of look on the horizon for other projects and things that are, to see how all the pieces fit together, because we don't want to make improvements around the hospital and it just moves the problem further downstream, further upstream.
Right.
So that's kind of a, that's something we have to be aware of, and we don't want to put a greater burden on any neighboring residents as well. We want to make sure it's solving the problem for everyone.
And that was kind of a point that I was wanting to make there, is like, sometimes when we start making improvements, it actually gives a burden to people farther down the road. So I think it's owed to the community to understand that as these infrastructure upgrades are happening, we're not taking it from one yard to the other, there's actually a plan to actually move it out of the city.
One other thing probably worth noting, this past Friday, there was an incident on 15th Street that caused a brief power outage. I would also like to thank staff, electric staff, police, fire. It was kind of Public Works, it was all hands on deck, because we had to create a detour around an existing detour, and DOT staff assisted as well. It was multi-agent cooperation, agency cooperation to make that work. I know it was an inconvenience for a number of citizens, but again, we had staff working from 9:00 in the morning to 10:00 at night to try to get that resolved as quickly as possible. We just want to thank them for all of their efforts, and everyone went home safely. So that was the biggest priority.
Yeah, great to hear that everyone went home safely. And again, on behalf of the city and council, we'd like to thank all the staff for all their hard work on Friday afternoon. You know, sometimes accidents happen, and we do not have control of accidents, but we definitely appreciate our staff and all that they did to be safe and make sure citizens get their power back as soon as possible. I know some might not think it was fast enough, but we had to make sure that the work was done in a safely manner for all that was involved. Again, thanks to our staff. We got a few minutes before six, we'll take a five-minute break.
Yes, for our public hearing, we have an ordinance amendment, it's an amendment to Section 2-215 regarding in the membership makeup, specifically members to add the emeritus member to the planning board, this is the language that was initially discussed, looking at some of the protocol for that, and with that title, we recommend changing emeritus to alternate, so that member does have voting power, we consider that in the public notice a non-material fact that was listed, so we'll just make a text amendment of emeritus to alternate to allow the new member voting rights, again, I think that was the full intent when we were making this adjustment, was just to make sure that all of the language and the minutes reflect correctly, that emeritus can sometimes be confused for just kind of an honorary member with no voting authority, and that wasn't the intent that we had when we were creating this and making this change, so we will change emeritus to alternate, and we will reflect that in the text amendment.
Yes, sir, is there any discussion?
Mr. Mayor and council, so what took place to bring this about before you was, we had a member of the planning board who was an active member, and then they fell ill, and this active member was extremely active in moving forward with all things planning board until this came about, this individual has been ill and trying to take care of their health the entire time, and with this position change, it allows us to not just push people to the side or push them out of the way, it allows them to still be a part if they would like to be, and as of now, that member does express that they would like to be, even though understanding that the duties of the planning board must continue to move forward, so after some speaking with city in trying to figure this out, the board came up with an idea of making this member an emeritorious member, but then, after more research and digging, the idea was to turn this into an alternate position, meaning that if present to meet quorum, if a member does return to the meeting, they have a vote, so it would help towards quorum to move business forward, on the flip side of that, if they're not present, it does not stop the mission of the board, so that's where this came about, and that's why this is in front of you tonight.
Okay, all right. Are there any other questions or comments from council?
I'd like to have a comment, you know, we have people that have different handicaps, and that if someone wants to serve, to be a part of the community and do things to help the community better, sometime when you shut them off, they go down, but if they have a chance to express themselves and make stand and help the city to do better, it helps them to do better, and I wouldn't be in the way of a person trying to do that.
Yes, sir. Are there anyone in the audience like to comment on this item? If not, we would now come out of public hearing for zoning, we're out of public hearing, so what's council pleasure on this item?
Mr. Mayor, I move that city council adopt the ordinance amendment to add alternative member to replace emeritus member to the planning board. Second?
Okay, we'll have a motion and a second, is there any discussion? Don't have any discussion, all in favor, raise your right hand, please, all in favor? Okay, thank you. Don't have any closed session item tonight, so the next item is, need a motion to adjourn until September 8th, 2025, at 5:30 PM, city council chambers.
So, second?
All right, motion second, and everybody raising their hand to adjourn, y'all have a good evening, thank you for joining us, and now adjourn.